What's happening, Erica?
Happy afternoon.
Oh, now we're here. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too. I got my shot yesterday.
Did you go to Northside also?
I did. Yeah.
That was, that was an experience. I don't know how long the wait was when you went, but it was something.
We were there at 2:20. Well, our appointment was at 2:20. We were out by 3:05.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. I can't, okay. It only took you about half hour. Okay, that's good. I think, I think it was probably closer to an hour for me. Again, all things considering concerning how many people they were sailing, there was all right. My only problem is they, and I have this a lot, they don't know how to deal with the apostrophe in my last name. Some computers don't. So, for example, my driver's license and my passport have different spellings of my last name.
Oh, wow.
Which is super duper fun.
I bet you mortgages are really fun for you, too.
What's that?
Mortgages, like any sort of loan documents? Yeah.
The best. I'll put it all in my wife's name.
Yeah, no, they, they had two of me. They had entered my name in apparently incorrectly spelled. And so they're like, wait, there are two Erica Harrises and one was with a C and one was with a K. So instead of erasing that second one, the, or the first one, they incorrectly made of me, they just made a second one. So that was.
Good times. But now you have to go get four shots.
Give you another shot.
I'm gonna hard pass on that. I don't know. I mean, I don't know how you felt, but I, you know, I'm, I'm more awake now, but that thing knocked me out. And last night I was running a, and it was just my first one, so I'm just calling myself immune, super immunity. Um, I was running about 100.1 last night and just slept, just like was knocked out.
Aside from a little bit of soreness, I'm okay. And there's terrible rash, but that normally comes anyway.
Hmm.
That's super. Good, good. I'm glad. Greetings, everybody. Yeah, no, I, aside from a little bit of arm soreness, it's been nothing to worry about. So.
Yeah, good. Yeah, yeah. The being punched in the arm, that's always fun. So.
Yeah, right on. All right, well, I'm gonna mute myself before I say anything additionally dopey.
The hour is at hand. Is everybody ready? And the folks on there? Erica's on there, Ed's on there. Great. All right, gotta get everybody set up here. Well, welcome to the Dunwoody Planning Commission for our March 9 meeting. Thank you all for being here in person and those on Zoom. So you are all very welcome. And tonight we have several items, as you can see from our agenda, and at first is to do our roll call. So if we go ahead and we'll start with Commissioner Abram on my right.
Jared Abram.
Kirk Andrews.
And I'm Bob Dallas.
Thomas O'Brien.
Rob Price.
All right, I'm gonna see how we can do this here. We have, I guess we'll start with Commissioner Harris.
Erica Harris.
And then we have Commissioner Wagner.
Ed Wagner.
All right. So does that cover everybody? And then we have from our staff, Richard. Hi.
Bryce Zeng and Allegra Durnor.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us by Zoom. We've got to wave hands and I know we've pushed a button sometimes to wave hands as well. Everything's become so electronic. So the first thing we have is our minutes and as you all know, I was not at the last meeting. Fortunately, I had the prior date down on my calendar as opposed to the one that you actually attended. So with that, if people have reviewed the minutes, ready for a motion in a second and then or any changes to the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes submitted.
Is that, is that Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Paul's second Commissioner Harris's motion.
Okay, the motion second, no changes. All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. All right. Now, I, excuse me, I'm gonna change mine from a yes to an abstention. I'm sorry, I need to abstain for that because I wasn't there. And next we have the elections for Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. And with that, you know, we're pretty somewhat informed the way we've done this in the past, but are there any nominations for Chair?
I was gonna ask Bob, as someone who has not been through this process.
Is there any way we can, hold on two seconds, please, Commissioner. Can we turn the volume up significantly? I'm having unfortunately a little bit of trouble hearing.
So if you don't mind, I would like to run the vote, just because it takes the priorities out of it. So I will take any nominations for Chairman.
Well, I'll nominate Bob Dallas as Chairman.
Second.
Second, are there any other nominations? Oh, yeah, but sorry, Richard's doing it, right?
Erica, do you have any nominations?
No, I was just curious what the process was. So I didn't read it in my bylaws.
All right, are there no other nominations? All right, we'll have a vote on Bob Dallas as being Chair.
Raise your hands.
Thank you. All right, and for Vice Chair.
What nominations? Am I allowed to do a nomination? I'm not Chair anymore, so I can make a nomination, I guess. I'm not Chair for the moment. I nominate Thomas O'Brien.
I'll second that. Commissioner Harris.
All right, can I have a vote, please? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Vice Chairman of the Plan.
Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business that we're aware of? I think Richard was telling us that the City Council approved last night the perimeter project. So that is a remarkable thing.
Which project was that?
This is the one where the old Watcovey Bank Building is.
Oh, yeah.
But we have new business. Then if we don't have any unfinished business, and that's item number one is to review and consider a tax amendment to the standards for the PD Plan Development District. And so I understand Mr. Leon Hard is going to present.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. So give me just a second to share my screen here.
Sure.
You should be seeing my screen on your computers now, too. Is that correct?
I see it on the small computer here.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the individual. Okay, wonderful. Yep, so we have two tax amendments tonight. The first one is to amend standards for the PD, the Plan Development District. Now, want to give you a little bit of introduction to the PD District because it behaves different than the other zoning districts that we have. It's a sort of a customizable catch-all district to allow for unique uses and unique designs. It doesn't have specific sort of standards going with the PD District. Instead, it requires an overall development plan to be submitted at the time of rezoning. So if a case comes before you all, as the Planning Commission, it is supposed to include a specific type and location of users, the use intensities of the exact square footage, the number of dwelling units. It is supposed to include the architectural design and elevations. It's supposed to include circulation and parking plan, end of tree plan and grading plan. So much more detail than you typically see with the rezoning. Because with this sort of additional detail comes additional flexibility. Because when the overall development plan conflicts with the zoning code overall or the development regulations, then the ODP governs. So it truly is a flexible, malleable zoning district that can accommodate more or less any development form. And this follows the regular approval process. So all of these would have to be zoned for the PD District specifically. So it would follow the same process with the recommendation, recommendation by the staff. Then it would come to your kind of recommendation by the Planning Commission and then approval by the City Council. The difference is that because of where this complex with the zoning ordinance, the ODP governs, this, these type of projects don't go to the zoning board of appeals for variances because these type of relief questions are already decided by the Mayor and City Council as part of the overall development plan. Currently, this isn't existing, this is an existing zoning district. The only change that we're proposing at this time is to increase, decrease the minimum particular land area that's required for this from five acres to 200,000 square feet, so approximately five acres to one acre. So it'll be possible for smaller developments or for smaller type of land areas to rezone to the PD District. And then we added some small administrative changes as part of this tax amendment to reflect sort of current administrative practice. So there are some advantages and disadvantages with going through this process. A big advantage is that it reduces the duplicative review that comes through the rezoning and the variance process. This removes generally uncertainty. So you couldn't have a situation where something gets approved by the Mayor and City Council only to be denied the required variances by the zoning board of appeals. Eventually, so it folds both processes into one process. And in that sense, it is somewhat similar to the 84 perimeter center east case that you all had heard at the end of last year in the perimeter center district. Relief from the code is granted as special land use permits and is sort of also hurt by you all and, and the city councils. So this process is a bit similar in nature to this. This requires more upfront engineering and architectural design. So when typical kind of rezoning cases come to you, they can be very conceptual in nature. So for instance, the 84 perimeter in the east case didn't have a completely designed building on there yet. It was approved after 14 stories, but it could be less. It requires more upfront work. And at the same time requires a higher level of scrutiny. And because once we approve this overall development plan, then the developer can more or less come in for building permits immediately after the fact. So it requires a higher level of scrutiny as part of the review process. And yeah, with this, I would like to conclude the staff presentation and be recommending approval for the amendment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else speaking at this? Is there anyone speaking in opposition, either online or?
I see no hands raised in the Zoom application.
No, I really don't at this time.
I apologize from a Zoom perspective. Could you please turn your mic on and speak into it? For some reason, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Does that work better now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay, I do not have any questions right now, Bob. I think I'm, I think I'm good.
Okay, you have any questions?
I was just curious what the background was on this.
So background is kind of twofold. One, there is a development by the City Council to ask for more detail on some of these applications. So we have the 84 perimeter in the east case was approved, but 27 zoning conditions now. So there is inherently sort of more upfront required by the developer. But this is a trend that we're seeing. It's not just happening here in Dunwoody, but it's been happening all throughout Metro Atlanta. Whereas every single year, there's more zoning conditions added to this. So it goes towards this direction a little bit. So we are sort of on staff level considering also to do concurrent variances in the future. So that's something we're analyzing as well to do concurrent variances with zoning cases. They could be decided at the same time without having the duplicative process. And then so this would be a step towards this by broadening the PD District solution also.
So, so staff initiated this?
This was initiated by staff.
Okay, thank you.
Brian? One of the, the burrs in my saddle as these big plans, and I'm gonna cite 84 as an example of that, is plans come in front of us that are not fully baked. You know, the very first time we saw 84, we asked them to go back and take a look at a couple of things because it wasn't quite there. One of the concerns here, and I'm certainly willing to entertain changing my mind about this, is if we have incomplete plans and we're taking out a level of review in the interest of being even more sparing, are we just looking to push, you know, projects through? You know, and I cite, for example, the parking garage appearances, how we were gonna minimize that, whether we were going to, whether 84 perimeter was going to speak with their next door neighbors and get approval or talk about what's going on there. Not that they necessarily need it, but it just hadn't been thought out at the time it came in front of us, not to mention some elevations. So I'm a little bit concerned about, about kind of streamlining this process too much and missing out on a level of review that otherwise might have happened by virtue of a slightly more cumbersome process. The other thing is, I would like to know, and I think I probably know the answer to this, but moving from five acres to one acre, what's the impetus there? Why one acre versus five, or is there a specific, is there a specific, is there magic to that size? Or does it just sound good? Or what are we talking about there?
So it's a smaller location. For instance, like the 84 perimeter in the east case was about like a tad over two acres. So that's a common size, given that, you know, these big development opportunities in Dunwoody don't, don't exist to the, to the same extent anymore. And, and then there's a sort of second aspect to this is that there is an existing PD zone in, in the city of Dunwoody that's partially city owned. And there's a procurement process happening right now that, and this side is, is about like two acres as well. And it's currently PD zones. So we expect to see something more kind of of that scale.
Let me also ask while you're up there, Paul. Thank you for that answer. That makes sense. But let me ask, why maybe not say two acres? I know some of the lots in Dunwoody, in our residential areas, you know, or an acre. You know, it's not necessarily common, but I don't think it's uncommon. Are we worried about exposing potential neighborhoods and rebuild situations to, to plans that might not be desirable to, to neighbors on these one acre lots that now could potentially be subject to this PD? And I understand levels of review, but let's just talk about the potential unintended consequences there.
Yeah, that's a, that's a valuable kind of concern. And that's kind of why, why it's running through the process. Maybe that one acre is not, you know, the perfect solution to this. It could be that it's, that it's, that it's two acres. There's a fair amount of lots in, especially I'm thinking that the Dunwoody Village site, kind of, I'm thinking perimeter center that are sort of somewhere between an acre and five acres, but, but not at five acres.
Okay.
So that's, that's possible that, that's something a bit more than one acres is a good solution to it.
And so for this contemplated plan that you're talking about with the acquisition and process now, a two acre number, should it be our recommendation, a two acre number would still allow a project like that as contemplated to proceed, but might offer protection for some of these larger lots that might be redeveloped in the next years to come, like one acre lots.
It could be. I'm not sure what the exact sizes of that.
We talked about this. We had to come up with a number. One acre was generally thought of because most of the residential lots are smaller than that. And so that was the thing. That was why we chose one acre.
Okay. But, but what I'm, what I'm guessing trying to ask is if we were to, if we as a body were to recommend two acres, does that kind of defeat the impetus that caused this to come in front of us in the first place? Does that, does that create issues? I mean, that's certainly a consideration.
It could. So, I mean, there are so many variations on where it is and what surrounds it. So we just felt like that was the place to start.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. I guess I'll be, I'll take this with a question in the other direction. If we're saying one acre, why not just not have an acreage requirement on this at all?
Well, that getting it below one acres would introduce it too much into the residential areas. So.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I thought. I have a lot that's more than an acre. So I guess if this passes, I can put something fun there. Anyway, that's the only question I had was just, was just getting at the acreage thing.
Commissioner Price? Okay, that was it. All right. Who on the line wants to go first? Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Um, so, so one of the things that I read was requires and then heard y'all talk about in the presentation was requires a higher level of scrutiny as part of the review process. And that's, that was a benefit. I think I'm concerned by that from a planning commission perspective currently because of our two month limit on review. We're not two month, but two, two time go around. In particular, if we're using the 84, I don't think it's just the 84. We've had a couple of projects that have come to us without a high level of detail. And and so, you know, we keep running into, I understand, you know, the history on the city's perspective of limiting that time. But in particular, if we're removing a second step, yet still creating such a tight bind on planning commission, I'm not sure with, I'm not sure that that matches the higher level of scrutiny. I don't think that marries that well for me in my head. I also have some concerns over the one acre. I would definitely want to see that increased. And I think I am concerned, you know, one of the nice things about the zoning board of appeals is there is some protection inside residential areas. And so I think I'd like to understand more on how residential areas that would have, would have inside of a neighborhood, as an example, a couple of larger lots, maybe, you know, how, how are those neighborhoods still protected from an over eager developer who might use this to put in some more densely populated, let's say multifamily housing? If, you know, they were able to gather a couple of, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing worst case scenario in my head. So what is a worst case scenario? And how, how, how would this process stop a worst case scenario? For example, multifamily housing condos, townhouses being sloped in the middle of, let's call it Redfield. No, Dunwoody Club Forest. They have larger lots. Dunwoody Club Forest.
And it's, it's still the zoning process. So there's still the same level of scrutiny. It includes, that includes a community meeting, that includes the planning commission hearing, that includes the city council hearing. It's not different in that sense than if someone would rezone to a townhouse district, which, which they could do, or like a multifamily district. So it all depends on, you know, what, what the council is willing to entertain kind of. And in a way, with or without this change, the council always maintains the right to rezone properties in the city.
Um. So then I just want to make sure I'm clarifying this in my head. We're basically turning the rezoning over to city council versus it going before the ZBA.
So if, in, if in your example, if I understood correctly, like there's a single family residentially zoned areas, someone wants to build townhouses, then that would come before you all at the planning commission right now, too, for, for rezoning. Then that that would come before you all at the planning commission right now too for for zoning and then would be decided that. At at the city council also. So there wouldn't be a change for this. The difference would be if they were to request variances as part of the rezoning process. And then those would be if they would rezone to the PD district, those would be decided by by the city council with the recommendation from the planning commission.
Okay, that's, yeah, all right. So that, okay, thank you for for stating that much more eloquently. Yeah. Just to the city or well, to everybody, but planning commission, I do. It feels. It doesn't, this idea of requires a higher level of scrutiny. And the planning commission's involvement being even more, you know, requiring more details to come before us. So more questions, more time, more review. I just, I worry, given some of the projects that we have seen, would we have the time to be able to review it fully? Given some of the parameters that we have with time constraint. And that's that's it.
Mr. Wagner?
Sure, thank you. Yes, one of the benefits of going after my fellow colleagues is I get to listen to their commentary and benefit from it. I do echo some of the concerns that were stated by some of my colleagues. And I guess the the biggest one for me is the how they chose one acre just seems rather arbitrary. Without any analysis that backs it up. So that's that's probably my biggest concern. I just don't hear anything that backs up why one acre versus two or three. But I guess maybe we can vet that out through discussion. That's my, just echoing my concern.
Let me ask a couple of questions and perhaps use an example to help illustrate. So when I read the red line version of the change, obviously, the biggest is from two hundred thousand square feet, which is essentially three acres. To one acre. And the other changes, as far as PD is concerned, are not that significant, other than that one point. So in today's world, the three acres limits in some respects where you may be able to do something. So for you, I'm going to use Valley View right here as an example. If today I went in and decided, you know, the homes close to Dunwoody, many of which are rented. Or dated and all of which back up to apartments. If I was a developer said, you know what, I could come in here and on either side of Valley View Road. With three acres, which is probably six homes deep or seven, I'm not sure exactly how many that would be. Come in and propose a PD development, correct?
Yeah, they could.
Right. And in that, the variances that I normally would have to go through if I was just doing one lot. I wouldn't go that go through that process. So I would come up and present a complete plan picture that proposes some things that, for example, instead of being ten feet apart from these, you know, some of these townhomes, I might have some that are eight feet apart. Or, you know, some other things because of topographical, this or the other, don't fit exactly what the development code states. But my project has all these things in it. And so holistically, it's considered, even though if it was on a smaller scale, it would have to be compared to what the rules say. And if I don't want to follow the rules, I have to go through the variance process. Hence, it'd be presented to us. But we would be approving or disapproving, not knowing whether or not a variance would even be achieved. Okay, so let's take what this is doing, which is having one acre versus the three acres. So instead of, let's say, six or seven houses, I could do it with. Would it, I don't know, sure how many, but what two houses, let's say, I could propose my townhome development there. And so when we look at the criteria for zoning changes like that. The PD, its own classification would be obviously a significant zoning change in our one hundred neighborhood. So that process still would engage the community meetings, as you stated, of course, the planning commission, which we can defer one time. And then the city council to reviewing defers as much as they want. So that that to me is a an example of, you know, something. Obviously, you can apply this example in Dunwoody Village or Georgetown area or the, you know, the Jet Ferry Williamsburg area of Dunwoody. And Tillamille area, Long Windes Chapel there. So the the question is, the benefit of having smaller parcels considered PD, is that a good thing? Because a developer coming in with the risk that they might get a variance, which is critical to the project. And then investing in going through this process because the variance always comes after the zoning. Is is one that should be weighed. And so I guess from the staff's perspective, the idea is putting it all together. Makes it smoother for the developer, smoother for the staff to look at holistically. And process wise, still engages the community in the exact same way. Instead of having two boards look at it, though, one board. Would look at it. So one technical question, though, and that has to do with planning commissions versus zoning board of ZBAs. You know, we're a recommending body. We have the authority of our words, but beyond that, not much more. ZBA, on the other hand, is a quasi judicial body. And an applicant appeals from there to the courts. It doesn't go to the city council, does it?
No, it gets appealed to the court.
Right. So in today's day world, whether it's three acres or one acre under the PD with these changes. You know, as far as we're concerned, if they don't like our answer, you know, we say deny. Well, the city council could say approve. Or vice versa, as we know. So that doesn't change anything there, does it?
No, that that would stay the same.
Yeah, so when I look at it, it's really critical to ask question. Will this produce better outcomes throughout Dunwoody for parcels that have potential for improvement? And I use the term improvement, not geographically towards anything that's there. But, you know, if they want to start with my house, please, you know, we have home built nineteen fifty six. It's dated, right? I mean, versus some of the standards that we see today with many of the teardowns and new homes coming up. And so that might give a developer an opportunity. Let me ask you this, if you have a neighborhood like, you know, pick anyone, branches, for example. And somebody said, you know, I I'm going to come in with a PD in an R one hundred area. That nothing would prevent them from doing that.
So they they could come in for it hypothetically. So we don't foresee it kind of on the staff level. We wouldn't encourage like single family residential developments to come in under the PD district. But but you're correct, they they could.
Right.
Why wouldn't we just eliminate existing residential? Make that a part of this.
Because this this could be used for like mixed use type of districts. This could be used for the the typical kind of, I think, typical applications for this historically are of mixed use developments or like some sort of innovative. And and the second one is probably conservation subdivisions, which are residential in nature. But by preserving a certain area of the site, they're asking that the same density applied. At the other section, kind of the developable section of the codes. I think the residential is valuable for the PD district. And we would suggest it should remain.
Bob, were you finished? I had another. Were you done?
Just if I could address Dallas's question. In the if we reduce it to one acre, they could still come into R one hundred even now. They have three hundred thousand square feet, they can come in, so.
Sure. Let me give you another good example that actually. Robert Price, I guess, came in with the project across from Austin Elementary. That was, was that just under three acres?
The four hundred thousand square feet is like four point two five or something.
That he could have come in with a PD, let's say, and avoid any kind of variances he might have asked for. That that's a real world example of something that we addressed recently. So I guess if I would just simply say, do you think this would benefit the people of Dunwoody? To have parcels out there that are smaller, where a developer coming with PD, recognizing that in general. The market pushes towards those areas where a mixed use is more likely appropriate. I submit to you, if you went in the middle of Dunwoody Club and said, I want to make a PD. And put a bunch of, you know, inconsistent with R one hundred things, you probably would not get a whole lot of support.
Fair, fair point. Let let me pick more, let me pick more or less centrally located neighborhoods like that, maybe more on the edge.
I'm sorry, yes.
So this has just got me thinking here then. So and this is more of just a mental exercise, but could this thing be geographically restricted? So five acres throughout the city and one acre in certain geographic areas? Because it sounds like we want to target this in areas that have already been kind of identified for development and growth. Is that possible? Or does that just create so much of a bureaucratic headache that it's not worth it?
That map would be like it'd be scat afraid.
Yeah, kind of, it kind of overtake everything. I I guess basically this, the staff is asking for a tool. Or a smaller parcel. Do we have any examples of, you know, now where this is being asked for? Or you think, you know, it would it would do good for Dunwoody Village or or this big place?
So there are two places that were zoned PD at two hundred thousand square feet. One of those down there. State Farm. The other one was Dunwoody Green. Those are very small lot, it was chopped up into very small lots, but that was and also on the other side, enclave at Dunwoody was the John Reeland project, which is currently under construction.
Would it be possible to say in areas outside of R one hundred? Or I assume, yeah, R one hundred. Because we have.
Yeah, you could say anything you want.
I'm sorry, say it again.
I said, you could say anything that you want.
Oh, I do, and nobody listens anyway. So what the heck? Yeah, I can say whatever I want. I think we've tried that in the past, it didn't work. Well, I mean, I, because if I hear the concerns of this conversation, it has to do with areas like R one hundred. And other areas where that may make some sense. So if you excluded the R one hundred, have you taken care of those places over which you have a concern?
Well, I would, I would come back to Thomas's point about one acre. Why do we pick one acre? You're thinking mostly of commercials, you know, existing commercial property. That's going to include most of commercially zoned property in Dunwoody. If you, there's not many that are under an acre, right? So, you know, if you just said two acres, that would from the existing parcels that are commercially zoned, that would change the scope, you know, the opportunity dramatically. You know, every bank in Dunwoody or fast food or whatever, not many of those, but restaurant would be eligible for this. Because they're probably close to an acre. Just a note to Thomas's point, but so just so we understand. This property would go through, it would go through a rezone and we would have an opportunity to comment via the rezone. But once the property was rezoned, it would pretty much be a staff developer negotiated process.
Staff and the city council would set those conditions.
And council, right.
So we are just charged with enforcing those conditions.
Basically, as Bob noted, it just kind of cuts the ZBA out. Of the kind of the after the fact part of the part of the process. So what's your pleasure? I I've got mixed feelings about this, but I'm happy to form a motion, at least to give us someone to start talking about.
By the way, we we have the opportunity to, let me confirm this. If if having this discussion now to cogitate over it and come back at a next meeting as well to to do that, or is with which is there anything pressing right now? I guess it's my question.
The only thing is the city is trying to sell a portion of land that is zone PD. So and it is under two acres. Potentially delay that.
Okay, well. Yeah, clearly, there's a reason why they were asking for this, but here's what here's what concerns me. And this is what I'm hoping to maybe begin to address, but I'm interested in having this cut to ribbons too, if y'all think so. I'll move that we approve this with the following changes. I want to change it to, I I'd like to change it to something that precludes most R one hundred by implication. So if that's, let's say, one and a half acres. And that'll be where I start and somebody can educate me otherwise, I'll happily change that. One and a half acres, but I also want there to be, I want to recommend that council in review of this add a add the ability of the planning commission to have unlimited deferrals on matters regarding PDs. You know, this is, we we've I've heard several commissioners express concern about our levels of of our our ability to scrutinize projects. And we've been hustled along a couple of times by half baked projects that have come in front of us. And then further hustle along previously by by council, kind of giving us only a couple bites at the apple. I'm going to recommend we have the ability to unlimited defer. And I'll let council do with that as they may, but I want to tighten the acres up or loosen the acres up a little bit above one. And and give us unlimited deferrals on PD, matters of PD review. So I'll stop there and see what everybody's pleasure is about that.
Is there a second? I'll second that, just so we can get the discussion. Second for discussion. So let's start with you, Chris Price. I guess we're going to go back to staff with a question for one and a half acres. Does that cut out something of concern with, you know, the ability of the city to get the development that they want in some of the areas that they wanted?
Yeah, I don't want to judge it just on that one case, you know.
Yeah.
Probably could, probably.
Okay.
But it's better than the four and a third acres.
Yeah, you know, I I think, I think phrasing it with these two stipulations that Commissioner O'Brien mentioned. At least will convey to the commissioner, to the council, kind of the concerns that we've identified. So I'm okay with, I like that approach. I think the city council will do what they want with this, but I think trying to get at how to protect residential areas. And also how to get at, you know, making sure we're, I guess, expressing our opinion that sometimes it is beneficial to have a third look at something. Is useful. So I like it as is.
So over here, Mr. Andrews?
So practically, I think what Thomas has suggested is that we could defer this thirty day deferrals. As many times as we want, is what you're saying, just for this specific request.
Correct. It's it's not carte blanche, but it's a return to how things were before we were restricted.
Yeah, well, technically, we had a couple thirties, maybe. Bob, help me out. We had a sixty and then a thirty.
Yeah, we've done thirties, not often, but we've done them semi regularly. And then there was one that we did more than the twice.
Yeah, I can't remember the old rules and then we changed them.
But we we did it for very specific reasons, by the way. I mean, one of the, I think, important things is by articulating in our conversation, our concerns and getting our questions asked. The applicant was better able to narrow the project or address our concerns in a way that, you know. For lack of a better term, improved the application by the time that we got to the end.
Okay. And so one point five would be approximately sixty thousand square feet. To just be more specific on the language, it would be sixty four thousand or something if you want. To just be more specific on the language, it would be sixty four thousand or something, if you wanted to be even more specific.
Yeah, we could bring it down to the exact square footage of what.
And I'm of course comfortable with that, to be clear, so if that, if that makes more sense or reads better on. What we're writing up, that's great.
Give me more questions? Commissioner Abrams?
Yeah, I don't think we need to have unlimited deferrals on anything. I think there's a reason the city council. You know, try to cap us and probably for good reason because we're taking. In my opinion, we're taking a lot, way too long to kind of decide on things that. They're ultimately going to make the decision on, you know, we're trying to give input. As a recommending body, so. I don't think that we should have unlimited anything. I think one time deferral is probably, probably for good reason. And I am fine with the one acre as well, so I mean, I would, you know, motion to approve as is, but. Want to see who else might want to make a motion out there.
Commissioner Harris?
I like the meeting in the middle at the one point five acres or sixty five thousand square feet. I hear what Commissioner Abrams is saying regarding unlimited. And simultaneously, as someone with concern with some of the limitations that we have with the single deferral. I would, I would appreciate. More flexibility in that. I don't know if it needs to be unlimited, so. I don't unfortunately have. You know, when I joined, these limitations existed. And in the time that I've been here, I can only recall probably twice where I think we would have used more than one. One more. Deferl. So. I don't know if unlimited is necessary, but I do think that there. Is a potential with projects with this, again, to go back to the idea that. This will require a higher level of scrutiny, there will be more detail, and so maybe it will take more than one or two reads, one or two. You know, thirty minute sessions, hour part of a meeting, you know, once a month to be able to fully vet something, think something out. Have a developer go back to it, and yes, city council does. Do that too, but let's not forget that it helps the developer out as well to have our perspectives to. Part of, you know, with the eighty four perimeter, when they went before city council last night, if you guys were listening, you know, one of the things the developer said was like. Look, we got the advice, planning commission spoke and said, you should probably have it be age restricted, be able to. Move this forward, so. Even though we aren't a decisive body, we do act as a good standing board, I think, for the developer and for city council to listen, so for that. I don't need unlimited. Thomas, I might consider. Putting a number in there just to, you know, know that. For comfort to city council and for developers to know that we could not hold something up. Without any sort of end, so what would be reasonable for me? Three deferrals, certainly more than one. But I'd be willing to hear other people's thoughts on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Erica, that was great, Commissioner Harris, I should say, that was a great commentary. I feel the same way, I'm definitely more than one acre, one and a half seems like a good compromise. And then unlimited seems like it's just too extreme, so something. You know, two deferrals. Maybe three, something like that, that's something more that I'll be in line with supporting. That's it.
Well. I don't think we've gone beyond three. I don't recollect that at all, but. Going through in my mind's eye. You get an application. We make recommendations. That's. One deferral, they come back. And they make. Some changes, but it's not the changes that we want. So we say defer it again, that's the second deferral. And then. We come back and make changes. You would hope by then that. It would be made, but maybe they weren't, right? So I can't imagine beyond three being. Too conceivable in practice. So the unlimited of, you know. Perpetual deferral. Let me put it from the city perspective. If you have a board that has perpetual deferral. Their concern is that we will become a wayward board and just defer something forever. To keep it out of their hands for some. Inappropriate reason, and they would have no authority. So I appreciate that. I don't think we thankfully have ever done that, but I do believe that would be a. Hypothetical concern of theirs, so.
Sorry, I think one of the reasons that actually this got implemented, I think, was the tree ordinance. Which took forever.
That's exactly it.
Well, a lot of people had opinion on trees.
Yes.
We. Sure know that.
Yeah, I'm just sharing that as a historical nugget for folks that weren't on the board at that time. There was. A tree ordinance that I think it took us four months to get through.
So at this time, we have one thirty day, correct? So, Mr. O'Brien, would you consider an amendment? Of two thirty or three thirty?
Let me share with you why I said unlimited. I mean, the short answer is I would absolutely consider a change, but. The reason why I said unlimited is for the same reason that when the car dealer asks me what I want to pay for a new car, I say nothing. I don't want to pay anything. Now, obviously, I know I'm not going to walk out of there with a free car. But the point that I'm trying to make is that lets him know where my starting point is and we'll work from there. We're not actually negotiating this, but we are sending a message with this. We're sending our recommendation with the idea that we're very concerned. About the lack of scrutiny that very well could happen as a result of these changes. With that said, I am in the interest of getting this done, absolutely. I could establish comfort with three to four, and if we think we could pass it, then sure. But I want everybody to know why I'm doing this. It wasn't the unlimited for the sake of. For the sake of truly becoming that body, because I don't think that would ever actually happen. But I also have repeatedly railed against limiting tying our hands the way we have had them tied on past issues. And, and I don't think that's in the best interest of the community as well, so. With all that said. If we believe that we can get it done with, with three deferrals, I still think that sends a message. I don't think it sends the pie in the face message necessarily, but maybe it's more practical and workable, so. With that said, I will amend. My motion. To include three thirty day deferrals, make the recommendation that there be three thirty day referrals. Excuse me, up to three, at our discretion. Three thirty day referrals on PD review matters that come before us.
Just a second, accept that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a revised motion that has been seconded. Is there any further discussion amongst the commissioners? All right, scene readiness, all those in favor of the. Motion signified by raising your hand? All those opposed? The motion passes? Thank you. All right. So. We're going to talk about fences next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, fence is next. This is a text amendment to men inside requirements. In single family residential districts. Generally, a little bit of background, there's. A few sort of overlapping requirements generally. In the city of Dunwoody and residential districts, allowing fences up to four feet in the front yard. Up to eight feet in the rear yard currently, and then in street yards. They can be up to six feet and they may need a special atmosphere permit. This text amendment would reduce the maximum fence height to six feet in. In rear yards or anywhere in single family residential districts. This chart, let me actually skip this one and go to this chart currently, this is a pretty nice chart we have in the zoning ordinance. That explains relatively well what is allowed. So you see like in dark green, the eight feet fences currently and then in lighter shading. The, the, the four and six foot maximum. So this would change to what's on this chart over here, so it would be up to six feet maximum in, in rear yards only. This is an issue kind of that goes more or less, we did some research on this, we tried to find some guidance, and this is something that goes. Back and forth and municipalities throughout the nation, more or less, like in some places, they're changing it from. Eight feet to six feet, and some places are changing it from six feet to eight feet, but generally. Municipalities have either a six foot maximum or an eight foot maximum. And the discussion is more or less sort of a trade off between an increase in privacy. Versus the right to enjoy sort of the natural setting, the landscape setting. In a place like Dunwoody for the neighbors that might be limited by, by a tall fence. We brought for you kind of here sort of a overview of what. What our peer cities. Are doing with this, and we unfortunately, because backyard fences do not need a permit in Dunwoody, so people. As long as they meet the code, they can do. Backyard fences without a permit, so we don't have a systematic overview of sort of the live preference of people. The, the couple of fences that we had were all six foot kind of privacy fences. Does generally that cheaper to build than eight feet per fences, so. Many people tend to stick with this, and this text amendment came. Request of Councilman Tomage and based on sort of complaints. Or concerns she's been hearing from her constituents. I think.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else speaking in favor of this? Anybody online? Do we have anybody that's speaking in opposition to this? Anybody online?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, start with Commissioner Price, I'm on that.
All right, I guess I have two questions. One is. A. Question about the packet. Page twenty nine of the PDF has the proclamation for the ordinance. Fought by text for the planned development district. Is that germane to this discussion that the proclamation be correct? If.
So there should be. And I checked before the meeting, and if you go on the agenda, maybe there was an error in the package, if you're on the agenda. And you click on the. You click on this text man for the fences, it should show up.
All right, I guess I pulled the packet this afternoon. And page twenty nine. Says ordinance amending chapter twenty seven. To adjust the level of fence height, and then it goes right into plan development district text. The memo below it that outlines, there's a memo that follows it. I just want to make sure that that. Is not something that needs to be correct.
Yeah, so that should show what's, what's in the text amendments. I do apologize.
Yeah, that was just kind of a question. You know, if it's going to mess up anything, and then. I mean, my question goes right to. Is what? Can you enlighten us, I guess, on what specific issues are prompting people not to want eight foot fences?
I think it's mostly in hilly sections of the city. I think the example that came to us was someone. Was grading a site and then was building a fence sort of on top of. Sort of this, this hill section. Making it even, even taller as it otherwise would be. Yeah, the sort of hilly nature, I think, increases sort of the looming nature of some of these tall fences. That, that's, I think, the concern that people may have.
See, it's, to me, it's, it's kind of a catch twenty two then, because if you're the downhill neighbor. Getting two feet lopped off of your fence, to me, is a real issue. I mean, if you drive down Mount Vernon. Kind of between vermic and. You know, and you head out towards, you know, Orchard Park and all that, everything is dropping off the hill to the side and all those folks. You know, if they were going to put a new fence in, would have to make it two feet shorter. So I guess I don't know what the solution is, because I, I think if I was a downhill property owner, I would want a taller fence, if, you know, that was important to me. So that's, it's more of an observation than a question, just an observation.
Commissioner Brian?
Paul, how many complaints about fence size have you heard? Let's just say over the past year. If you have that, you don't have to be an exact number, but let's talk about that.
Two.
Okay. And the eight to six motion would have solved both of those two issues, so we're. Is that, is that correct? Is that a correct statement to your knowledge?
No, because one of them was on the. Far east side of the city, and they actually did a ten foot fence, it was electric. So they came in to. Think you all. Did that case. But it wasn't. Residential area, so.
Okay, so we're basically hearing this based on what essentially would be a single complaint?
Apparently.
Interesting, okay. Let me ask also, this question for staff, with regard to enforcement, when we're talking about, you know, the backyards. What sort of enforcement is available for the city? When we're talking about needing to travel onto the property to evaluate, is that, do you have carte blanche there?
No, we'd have to be asked to come onto the property.
Asked by whom?
Either the person being complained against or the person complaining against them.
Okay, so a complaint from any party could allow. Traversal of the property for fence measuring. But again, we're talking about a single complaint is what I'm hearing. Okay, very good, thank you. I have nothing further.
Commissioner Andrews?
Is there a way to do this? To add some topography measurement component to this? Based on the example we've been given? Or some of the, some of the examples will be given?
We would currently, so any resident in the city of Dunwoody. Can more or less just build a fence in their yard. So we would prefer to have the regulations be as simple as possible. To not accidentally create any issues where people violate the code based on. Lack of, lack of knowledge. Personally advise against that.
The one example that was given. Was mentioned that someone was grading their property in such a way to. Make their fence even taller. I mean, that would, that grading process would have normally, would typically require a permit, right? Typically. Not always. So no, that's not triggering any other ideas. You're thinking that would make the code too complicated?
Yeah. We generally like, so fences are. Some even places with fence permits, you see a lot of residents just, just doing it themselves, kind of for hiring someone. So. We would recommend keeping it simple to not accidentally. Create enforcement actions against. Against residents. I've also put a sentence kind of in the staff member not to do sort of, because there is the opportunity for the special administrative permit. For additional scrutiny, but when it comes to these kind of differences. This. It's often hard to find sort of for us on the staff level, or, you know, the rational need. For the additional two feet in fence height, so we would recommend against that too. So I have this hunch that this would lead us to either just always giving out these type of permits or just never giving out this type of permits.
So. Someone asked the enforcement question, so I don't know how relevant this is, but any existing fence would be fine. Technically.
Correct, so existing fences. So assuming they were built lawfully. And they can generally be repaired, kind of they can be, and for fence, the fences have to be repaired and replaced every so many years. We are approving those.
But if they tore that existing fence down and started from scratch, that, that would trigger the new.
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abrams?
Yeah, I think, you know, my, my feedback is that I like, I like to leave people with choice as much as possible. And I don't think that we should try to punish the entire city for the actions of just one person in one yard. I think there's a lot of houses that can benefit from an eight foot fence specifically, if you have a development or. You know, another house directly in your backyard, I think you, you know, a lot of folks like to have that eight foot fence option. So I don't, I don't think we need to try to take this away from everyone just for, for one complaint. You know, out of one constituent, so. My recommendation would be to definitely not, not approve this text amendment.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, it's a curious, it's, it's curious that it's getting brought when it sounds like it comes from one person. I get it. I'm a six person. I'm a six foot person over eight foot person. I feel like eight foot can kind of close an area down. So I feel the complaint to the other people who maybe didn't like the eight foot, but then similar to Commissioner Abrams and then Commissioner Price, I think that they've raised some good concerns over wanting to make sure that we're not not limiting people when eight foot could benefit them. So I I'm on the fence here, which from city staff, which which council member brought this to the staff for looking at?
Came from Councilman Tomage.
Okay. And and I'm looking, I mean, I'm looking at Brookhaven, Shambly, Decatur, Roswell, Sandy Springs, and all those in particular, Decatur, Shambly, even Brookhaven, you know, I was thinking, I I mean, they've got eight foot maximum there, and they even have, you know, small backyards, their their lot footprints are small. So in my head, I would have seen those two things being flipped between six and eight. Yeah, I'm I'm not overly compelled by by this. I'm not overly compelled. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, yeah, my my thoughts are very similar to the my commissioner peers. So I'm thinking, you know, based on the one complaint, based on the the variances that are possible within the topography of the land, it it just doesn't make sense to to change something like this for me. So I wouldn't be in support of changing this.
Thank you. Have a couple of questions addressed by the staff. So nothing, of course, prevents me from planting evergreen trees or magnolias. That would be significantly taller anyway. Secondly, if we have this applied, and let's say as fences are prone to do, the wood ones over years, you know, they're not cared for, they fall down and basically what more than sixty percent is destroyed. And then I said, yeah, I want to put it back. I would not be allowed to put it back except through an exception process.
So for the we have the nonconforming section that specifies the the exact limit and what can be done. Typically, for for pens, I mean, it's relatively common that a lot of parts have to be replaced at the same time because a lot of it is wood and it's rotting. It's similar for a deck, kind of a wooden deck, for instance, and generally we do allow those to be replaced as sort of as part of the repair project, just given the specific nature of these type of improvements.
If a storm came through and just wiped it out, we've had that actually about twenty one years ago, twenty two years.
Then may not, it depends on the specifics, kind of, but but there are there are sort of situations where it could not be replaced in time.
And then as I understand your write up, it you you want to retain the discretion as the director to be able to allow the additional two feet?
No, we we do not want.
You do not want to be the decision. You do not want that.
We would prefer it to be either or, but we would like to not have the discussion.
You don't want to be that someone to try to decide that. I very much appreciate it. Well, I mean, just from my personal perspective, I can appreciate a person having a concern with a neighbor. But I've never heard this as as an issue in conversation with anybody since pretty much forever. So anyway, that's that's my opinion. Well, what's your pleasure, commissioners?
I'll make a motion that we do not approve this new fence ordinance. I'll second that.
There's motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand? That's unanimous, as I see it. Okay. All right, thank you for that. We have a public comment. Or is there any other business that we have? Okay. Do we have a meeting next month, you know?
We are planning on bringing the revised code ordinance, the signs to all. It's a complete overhaul. We have a group that's been working on it with us. We had a steering committee, citizens and the mayor. So and we also have the two parcels in the overlay, the village overlay that were taken out at the last minute litigation. So those are coming back to you as well.
Coming back, meaning to be reincluded, reinserted? And so that would be the J Christopher Shopping Center?
Yes.
And and the car wash? Okay.
Any chance we want to move the meeting off of spring break? Someone here might be in New Orleans.
Dunwoody school spring break is actually the week before that.
Oh, is it? Okay. Oh, the meeting is on
thirteenth.
Oh, hallelujah. Never mind. I'll be wearing beads for the meeting on the thirteenth.
But nobody's going to New Orleans, is that right?
Not on the thirteenth.
I'm following the CDC guidelines personally. But all right, thank you for that. Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
So we have commission comment. We'll start with Commissioner Wagner. If you have any comment.
My only comment would be thank you to my fellow commissioners, and thank you to the staff for your presentations. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, one note, and I I've shared this a little bit in the past. So I was watching the city council meeting last night, and I I just took a note that the that the apartments continue to be a heavy conversation piece among our city, our city council, and then, of course, us when it comes up. And so I took note that I believe when it came to the approval of the apartments in in general, I think, I mean, they had a lot that meeting. And so for any city council members who are watching this, hats off to you guys. But in terms of the approval of just the apartments in general, I believe it was a very split decision. It was a vote for in favor, three against. And so I just I it this continues to be an interesting conversation when we talk about multifamily housing and rental homeownership. And then really having a dialogue, PCID versus residential area. And so I'll probably I'll probably be calling city staff and but to ask some more questions for education myself, but I just it's interesting to watch it. It's interesting to watch us have the dialogue, but then to see a city council that is obviously very split on this idea of multifamily housing unit in the PCID area and or area. And I'm just, I'm I am interested on the impact of residential on the success of the PCID area. And I'm curious over what ends up being something where our planning commission fully in support of this and a city council that is split down the middle, and I think trying to understand more perspectives. And I wonder if part of this is needing to understand residential specifically to the PCID outside of Dunwoody as a whole. Because it's it was it was curious to watch. So not surprising, but curious. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Abrams?
Yeah, I got just one small comment on the on the whole deferral thing. Now, I just want I want folks, you know, my my thoughts on this are just to kind of get this out there is that, you know, I know that we always want to do the right thing. Now, this this commission is probably one of the most detailed planning commissions in in, you know, who knows, in Georgia, if you take a look at it. But I know we always want to do the right thing, but sometimes you know, when we defer and defer, it actually leads great projects from going elsewhere. Or us getting something that we didn't really want. And for example, I can't remember the name of his company, but, you know, when Archie Wanamaker, and it's because he lives in my neighborhood, he was trying to build a restaurant up there on Mount Vernon in Shambly Dunwoody. Remember, he was in here and we we pushed him the first time, and I think we did again. And then he had said at one point, all right, you know, if you're not going to work with me on this, I'm just going to put a regular building and you'll get another, you know, nail salon and a hair salon, and that'll be that. So he was trying to get a restaurant. Went ahead and deferred it a few times. He never got the restaurant, which is what a lot of folks wanted. Then he ends up. So what do we get there? We got another, you know, dock in the box. You know, little, you know, minute clinic where there's one a hundred feet to the east, and then there's one, you know, a hundred feet the other way next to the BP, right? So we deferred it while we were taking too long thinking about it. And then we ended up getting a project that we already had a bunch of. You know, so I always think that, you know, it's the city council that's going to make the final decisions. I think we need to give our two cents. You know, say what we wish as as representatives of the community. And then and then let them figure it out, you know? So just wanted to just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrews?
In light of this deferral discussion, I'll mention something. I was a a part of a process in another jurisdiction a few months ago where the planning commission had a you know, it was like three or four days prior to the official meeting, they had kind of a pre-meeting meeting that was mostly a staff driven meeting. It was limited to you know, so many minutes per per item. But it was a great way, I think, to kind of get everybody's juices flowing and to generate a more productive meeting. So then I don't know if if that's something that's done many other jurisdictions and and all, but I don't really care. I mean, it seemed like a good pattern, a good idea to me. So long as you limit the the amount of time that the meeting could maybe run for. So if we're typically meeting on a Tuesday, right, you know, maybe we could have a Thursday five to five thirty kind of preview planning commission meeting, especially when we have some bigger items on the agenda. It's just an idea.
Thank you. Commissioner Brian?
I'll keep it brief because I I want to speak to the deferment issue too. That's sort of close to my heart. I mean, again, we're charged by the city and by the council to review ideas, to provide our own, and ultimately to do what we believe is in the best interest of property holders within the city and people who live and work and play within the city. And I will speak for myself and myself alone. I've never once deferred or voted to defer in the interest of thinking about it. Every time I've voted to defer, I voted to defer because an idea came in front that was half baked or partially baked, or there was a concept that needed to be fully fleshed out. And I think there probably is middle ground, and and I understand the plight of developers that want to get their projects done. But at the same time, the timing here and rushing it in front of us and attempting to rush it past us isn't the right move either, because because it abridges the process that we've been charged by the city to provide. Thank you.
Commissioner Price?
I have nothing to add right now. Thank you. I have no no particular comment, except I just noticed today on vermic across the vermic swimming tennis club, that ten acre parcel has a for sale sign. I'm suspecting we may be seeing something coming down the pike on that. I would hope. But anyway, that's just to put it on your radar. So is that it for us tonight? Stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff. Thank you, people on the phone.